Let's call the, uh, what if finance budget workshop for Thursday. Here we go. What is like budget workshop meeting for Thursday, January 23rd to order? And today we're just gonna discuss, I don't want to take any action. We're supposed to discuss the budget and the capital plan. Prior to that, we, uh, the folks from Town Hall South, Anne, Sonia and Kim, wanted just to follow up on some of the things that they presented behind the bay to clarify a couple of things. So floor is yours, ladies.
Yeah, so we just wanted to come back to clarify some of the questions we had about, two different actions we were requesting in the new budget. One was, um, the elevation of one of our staff people we already have. And then the second was request for a new full-time position split between health and planning and zoning. There's been some discussion in the office about the first part, whether that, what we're really seeking there is somebody, as we talked, who can coordinate the implementation of EnerGov. And so maybe it's not an office manager, maybe it's a permit lead, some other title that doesn't imply overseeing the entire office, but overseeing the permitting systems and the procedures, the coordination between departments on that. It's, it's still a very important thing, I think, for us to do. The person we'd like to elevate is the one person who knows both Munis and EnerGov the best. And I know personally, I will be using her to help coordinate any revisions to the new permitting system. I know we're spending something like $225 an hour to hire the EnerGov company on a consulting basis, and she's a much cheaper alternate to that. So, I don't have much more to say.
How, how long has this EnerGov consultant been coming? And how, how? The development. Okay, so they parachute in and out when issues develop? They also provide us with support in terms of building the, building the processes and also the permits themselves. So, and hopefully we've paid our last invoice to those folks. At least that's, that's the plan at this point. So, yes, we will continue to get some support from EnerGov, but that support comes at a cost.
Pretty hefty price tag there.
If, if we do elevate a person to be that EnerGov guru in-house, would it ever end where you would not need an EnerGov guru in-house guru? And you could go back to occasionally paying the $200? I mean, is it, is it ongoing now that for the rest of our lives?
Yeah, I mean, in my brief experience here with Munis, which is our current system, we're continually adjusting and altering, altering components within the system. And so I don't think any permitting system is ever static. So I think there is an ongoing tweaking, if you will, going on. And I think that's probably better done in-house just because we all know what we need better than an outside consultants anyways. But it's good to have that capability so we can adjust on the fly. For instance, my fee schedule changes next month. We have to encode that back into the Munis system. We need somebody who can do that. Darker currently helps me do that. I don't know the system well enough to be able to do it myself. But there are things like that that just change over time where changing on the fly essentially is, is part of maintaining the system. And our regulations may change over time, which also change how we need to structure our permits and how things are processed internally.
The other thing that I, that happened when I was, um, working in the library, you know, I went through going from the typewriters to the computers in 40 years, that there were some people who had more of a natural ability to make the leap to newer things than some others. So, um, if we do do this, are the other admins, I mean, it's so easy to say, oh, Darker knows that. And then are they gonna, not, maybe not get as good as one? People have different levels, but are the other people just gonna go, I don't do that, Darker does?
And then? Yeah, I, I think we need a succession plan, as we talked about earlier, because Darker's not gonna be with us forever, and we can't be dependent on just one person.
And when new admins come in, they, they would be expected to?
We have to train them.
Learn.
Train everybody up.
I mean, not know it from the get-go, but that would be part of their job description.
Right, right.
I think Sandy's question is, is this, is this information gonna be spread out among all the admin? The answer to that is no. No. A subject matter expert is a subject matter expert because they are most familiar with the system in terms of how to tweak it. What you're hearing about is how to effectively tweak it and change it to meet the emerging needs as we go forward. In classic IT shops, information technology shops, you have, you have different silos or different skill sets. One of those is an application specialist. We do not have that capacity, that capability in our IT organization today. We have network, uh, network and, you know, belt and suspenders, hardware support, computer, you know, programming, not program, but, uh, computer delivery and setup, desktop, security management, et cetera. We don't have application specialists. The closest we have to an application specialist actually sits in the finance office. And that is Darlene. Darlene is the in-house Munis expert. And, and everyone defers to her. She's the one that receives regular training on an annual basis, participates in the Munis conference every year to stay abreast of what's going on. So, uh, the expectation is Darker will have that role. In addition to the other things that she's gonna be responsible for doing, which is still supporting the health department, and then also acting as, I think the term that we, we talked about maybe is administrative team lead, uh, which is to coordinate the, uh, the activities and entrance of the other admins in the building. Not direct line reporting, uh, but, uh, the, you know, sort of dotted line reporting. So she coordinates and is able to most, take, take advantage of the best way to distribute work in that building. Right now, and I'll give you an example, right now, uh, Kim doesn't have an admin. So, you know, uh, someone like Darker would take the lead in terms of, you know, making sure that that hole is covered by the other admin. So, we're, we're sort of getting away without a, a manager, an admin manager here, okay? Um, and again, part of this is their ability, your, your ability to work together as a team. Make sure you know that resources need to be devoted when there are, there are shortfalls. Same thing happened with Anne, when she had her admin was out on, on leave. People had to pick up for that, right? This, this makes it a little more formal. Someone is actually gonna have the responsibility for doing that in addition to her own, in addition to doing her own work.
I, I think though, to refund the answer to the specific question, that over time, we, if Darker is a repository of a lot of information about EnerGov and Munis right now, over time, she's teaching us all how to use specific elements. And I think we do have to all kind of get with it and, and learn those little pieces that are our own. Um, I'm not sure that we're gonna, you know, eventually when she leaves, somebody's gonna have to pick up that task. But there is no real duplication of overall.
Okay, so, this is a budget here. So are we talking additional full-time permanent?
No, what we're talking about is that the full-time additional employee is permit tech to support both, uh, health department and, uh, planning and zoning, similar to what Kim has in her organization, based on the volumes on the permits that are now coming through there. And that will relieve Darker of a bit of her responsibility.
Right.
Not the entirety of it in terms of her support, so.
Dark is existing.
Yep.
Okay, we talked a lot about what her new proposed responsibilities might be. So she wouldn't be a full-time permanent addition?
No.
No.
So you would be talking?
A bump in salary for her and then one full-time.
We have a number for that.
Not yet, we can determine.
I think we're working on that. That's not in here.
Because we're in a budget situation, just, you know, I know that's a negotiated thing, but, you know, so you say we're, we're not talking about a full-time permanent employee addition, but I'd like to know what that number is, whatever it is, and the calculation of the rest of the.
We are, we'll work with the, you know, that because it's a change of the job description and.
Probably another example.
And the permit tech, we do have a job description already for permit tech. I would assume it would be a similar number to what Sam is thinking, yeah.
So, uh, what I did for today, because we've got a lot of salaries to discuss, as you know, uh, just the plug-in numbers, this is not negotiated, hasn't discussed, uh, is basically about an $8,000 raise for the current position, sorry, $6,000. A $6,000, um, raise for that position. That's how it's been negotiated, just plugging in numbers just to have something.
Not to exceed number.
The, the permit technician is an existing, um, as we just said, is an existing job, job position that currently exists in the building department. So just taking the same information for that, I plugged that in at $44,000, approximately.
That's excluding.
Might include benefits or anything else to go with it?
Forty-five or forty-six?
Forty-four.
So we don't have a?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to.
You do, if you go to, um, page twelve of the, what I just sent to Tracy this morning, look at page twenty-seven, uh, on proposed salaries, you'll see that. Mary Jane?
I, I just want to add that all of these, the, the amounts that Mitch is speaking of right now are in our budget figures. So when I do my report of things that we have changed or adjusted, you're gonna see those numbers in there. Um, so we did not make, so we've put the money in, um, for the permit tech and the team leader. They are in your budget numbers as I will make the presentation. It will be up to you whether or not you leave them in, change them, take them out, whatever. But everything that's in Mitch's salary sheets, you will see in my budget presentation at, you know, after we're done with this conversation.
Okay, I think that's where we. Just to, just to clarify the same question, Charles is asking, is this P and Z in health department's full-time 50/50? That's the permit tech that we're talking about? So that's the new position?
Right.
Hence the highlighting, so thank you guys. I got that.
It says, um, building admin, but you don't have a building admin right now?
No, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be interviewing for.
But that's not a new position.
No, that's existing.
Person laughing though.
So I'm sorry, so where is the new position?
Sorry, she's page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
This is really hard to. Page twenty-seven. So page nine is the building department, you're saying that that's not where?
No, it's in the health department.
It's in the health department.
And that could change too, I just.
I don't know, but I'll try. This is, so this is a change since what we have.
There are several changes that I will go through with few salaries this morning.
Okay.
But they wanted to meet first before I was able to go through everything, so it kind of like.
I understand, just trying to see if we're in the apples or the oranges or the pears. Got it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we didn't have any of these numbers prior to the department presentation, so that's why they weren't included.
Okay, thank you. Yes, totally.
So, if I can raise one question, which I raised with Anne yesterday. I'm just, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna put in this software implementation person elevating Darker, but there's nowhere in this organization chart that addresses natural resources or engineering. And they have admins as well. We're gonna need to use that at EnerGov, I believe, so.
Yeah, we need to have a discussion with them. Kevin's out sick and Janice has been unavailable. So we didn't want to represent them in this meeting, but yes, we do need to.
It is my expectation, uh, that, um, Darker will have, uh, team lead responsibilities for those individuals for as long as they're both, uh, still working in the same building. I think I mentioned to you that we're considering moving engineering out of that facility over to, which would create a natural displacement and that probably, that probably that model would work with two different buildings.
Right.
So, but the expectation is that, uh, natural resources will be included in this.
Yeah.
Um, I think it probably makes sense if you want to update this chart. And, uh, engineering on a temporary basis.
Even if engineering physically moves, couldn't Darker be the, the help? I mean, could pick up the phone or send an email, I mean?
Darker will still be helping as, as it relates to EnerGov.
Right, that's why.
But, you know, the day-to-day distribution or assignment of work, you know, it's your turn to support Anne's organization because, uh, her, her person is out on, 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 on leave or, you know.
I just thought you were gonna say we'd need another.
No, 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 no. Connect zero back to this permit tech. I heard the phrase customer facing the other day, and I think it applies here, right? This person would be delivering direct citizen service.
Yes.
Builders would come in.
Absolutely.
Helping people with their applications.
Line staff member.
Absolutely.
And despite the fact that there's gonna be a computer that they see when they first walk in, especially at the beginning, lots of folks are gonna be like, bleh. The person is gonna be the first person and that is necessary to pull in management or whatever needs to happen. That's the next level. So what we're getting here is a higher level of service for our community.
It might help if Kim explains what her, she has a permit tech now. Can, can you explain what that person does in terms of the customer interface?
Well, Sam does a lot of the customer interface, and when they come in, especially if there's extra problems that's going along with their application, she'll come in and assist and help out. So they try to get resolved as much as possible as their application of where their process is, whether they should start with health department first, zoning, and where they come to building afterwards. So and make sure they have all their plans, their paperwork's together. So this way it's a lot more seamless process of them going to all the other departments and when they finally actually apply for their building application, which still needs to be reviewed by the other departments besides myself.
And you had mentioned earlier that, uh, you're not, at this point, given the, the volume of permits that are coming through, that, that's, it's become challenging for you to do your planning.
Yeah.
And so your supportive planning is on it, and also the myriad of, uh, planning studies and so forth that you have underway at this point. So this technician would actually approve some of the permits?
Would vet them to make sure they're absolutely complete so that when they need my eyeballs or Abby's eyeballs, we're not spending time doing, making the follow-up phone calls, responding to emails, answering the very basic questions. Some more technical questions obviously comes to one of us. But the idea here is to take the lower-level administrative tasks off my desk, off Abby's desk, so that we're freed up to do more of the planning study work.
And the zoning enforcement stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for taking the time to clarify. I think the, uh, the other day, um, we heard, um, in reaction to some change, to changes in Janice's organization, she was proposing personal utilization, there's that. We saw an immediate, uh, request from Kim. Oh, I, I, sometimes, you know, Adam is supposed to, Adam, which is the admin for, uh, engineering, provides additional support to building, and that's, that's actually in the job description, I think. And that's specific. Uh, it has not been occurring of late, uh, to the degree that it might have in the past because she's had, she's had a, an admin in there. We had an admin that was, uh, on, was, was.
Yeah, but a long time.
Was able to work remotely, she was not able to physically get into the office. So that gave me, I believe that we were working with Karma in terms of, uh, whether, we finally, afterward, about a year, several months, maybe a year. Maybe a year. We finally got Karma to say, she's to say, because she, she was injured in a fall. So we could let her go.
Still being taken care of, we had a meeting yesterday with Karma, it's still being, it's still an issue, but she's no longer employed.
So, so I just want to disabuse people of the notion that Kim was gonna get another body. You know, that is not just to fill in for the. There's an existing open.
That, that position that's talking about was filled for a couple of months, and the person we hired recently left because she realized that being an indoor administrator, it was not her forte.
She's now, now working at the greenery.
Yes, she's back.
As a former food truck. She's lazy. My neighbor.
Yeah, your neighbor.
That's right.
So anyway, she, she left her own volition, but that just left a void. Right now we've advertised, Kim has several applications, thank goodness, to look through, and we hope to be interviewing probably next couple of weeks.
While, while we're at it, let me just give you the thinking and some of the conversations I had with Mitch. We've had with, uh, some of the department heads, uh, and also with Mary Jane. So, Kim is not gonna get another, another admin, so that, that is one that is off the books at this point, even though it wasn't in the original numbers.
Was never begin with. Through me as much as through you guys.
Over at Police, um, I've had conversations with the chairman and the chief. If we were to grant one position, I'm, I'm not in a position, I'm, I'm not able at this point to support two new bodies over a police department. Just my recommendation, no, all right? But I listen to whatever everybody else has to say. So I gave them the option, which would you take? Would you take the, um, dispatch position? Or would you take the detective position? And the answer was dispatch, right? And I also pushed both the chairman and the, the chief, and I've asked Mitch to do the same, and Mary Jane yesterday. You might have recalled the conversation, which I wasn't really comfortable that we had gotten to where I wanted to get to about the contention that that position would significantly reduce overtime. And, you know, I maybe, that probably just wasn't clear enough to the chief in terms of explaining what I was looking for. But what I was looking for was, if in fact that's the reason for this, in addition to making sure we don't have sworn officers at the desk, all right? And we're paying sworn officers all the time, where's the saving? So the expectation is we're gonna get some, something that's gonna reflect the savings based on, on, on that contention overtime and possibly replacement salaries, but they, uh, but will be minimized, so. As far as, uh, so that, that effectively is two new positions that I'm gonna support. From, in my mind's eye, jury's out on Public Works. Three years ago, uh, I think it was three years ago, we gave, we gave them new bodies in terms of, uh, guys working in the field, and I think a foreman, right? In subsequent years, they got two new bodies. My thinking is, if we do anything, it might be, as we talked about, one at half a year's salary, bring him in in January one, see how that works. And again, that's, that's kind of where I am, uh, with, with, uh, Public Works. And I think you heard Mark, uh, you know, the chairman say, you guys have taken cares in the past, and they, and they, they know they don't expect to. Uh, and it was appreciative of the fact that we've worked with them in the past to stagger it when, when it was appropriate. So I think we've got some flexibility there. For John Trudis, the, the number you saw there on the salary line, it was, that was without any, uh, I, I didn't have eyeballs on that. So, um, anyway, uh, Mitch and I are working on a formula to try. Bring him, bring him from 24 hours to 30 hours. Because I, I'm gonna tell you, I need someone to do some, uh, project management. I just, I don't have the bandwidth to, to juggle some of the things that need to be taken care of.
What was the total when we were working with Madison?
It was seventy-something, I think. No, eight, nine, ninety?
Was it ninety? Forty-five each?
Right.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
So if he gets to thirty, that still saves us from benefits, right?
No, no. So we got balance.
That will trigger benefits.
About twenty-nine and a half. I mean.
We've done that.
I know, we've done it, we did it in the library.
He has the opt-out provision, but.
Matt, do you want me to run through all the, the changes?
Let me just, let me just give, I want you guys to understand my thinking, okay?
Yeah. I would prefer to go budget by budget instead of, as far as Mitch's question. Instead of going through them now, I think it's easier if we go budget by budget.
We have a calculation. What's the total number?
It is going to be, depends on what we do with Public Works.
That's case and worst case.
If we do Public Works, we want a Public Works, one new.
No, Public Works across the, well, net-net, one new.
We've eliminated position in the assessor's office. We've eliminated a position at the waste transfer station. And that's largely because of the, uh, the bag situation, the, with the. Which, by the way, are fantastic. Yeah. Some people think that. So we, we are, so our head count, our head count will be down one in the assessor's office and down one, uh, at the waste transfer station. So, uh, net-net, right now, if we don't do anything at Public Works, it's a wash with the exception of moving, you know, redefining a job description and, and giving a little more pay to, to the, to Darker. And then, uh, the same thing with John. So no new full-time employees.
And that.
Net. That, and that would include the, the, the dispatcher at Police. We would add that person, but since we're losing other positions, net-net.
Parking requisition is not one of these, okay?
What one was it?
The foreman, the assistant foreman for Tony.
Not to be confused with supervisor.
Okay. That's my.
I know what you're saying, I know, I know what you're saying, that. But let me ask a question, how many new employees and how many are we gaining and how many are we losing?
And I'll calculate it, and that, we're gaining two, and we're going down two. Went from four to three in the assessor's office, we've already done that. Uh, so that comes out of the budget.
Yeah, I know.
So it's not as bad as it sounded the other day. Well, at least in terms of what I am.
I spent the weekend thinking about dying.
Yeah, well, that's, that's basically right, I, I, eight, eight plus. I guess the question, Matt, just make clear that the two positions you're referring to then are dispatcher and the permit tech?
Yep, dispatcher and permit. Those are the ones that I can fully support right now. We, I want, want to talk, you know, we can talk about the, you know, uh, parking wreck and the public works, okay? But those are the, you know, at the end of the day, except we're saying no, no new, no new, net new.
Police, I'm. Have the police, um, gotten new people over the last few years? I just don't remember.
Yes, SROs, SROs to support, uh, the Board of Education.
Okay, so, I mean, he made, he, you know, he, he made a case for it, but we, I guess, I guess if it significantly reduces overtime, I feel like I can support it. But I just.
And this is actually the manifestation of the model we've been asking fire to do. And we had asked, uh, police at one point to do something similar, but particularly in fire. At what, and we had the same conversation with dispatch. Right. Uh, 911 dispatch, not dispatch at PD. At what point does it make sense to hire another body rather than pay overtime? And so, so.
Yeah.
So this, this appears to be an opportunity to realize that kind of potential.
And it's a misuse of, uh, police officers.
Yeah.
So that is.
Yeah.
We have too, too expensive, too hard to find, to be not using.
And that's not what they signed up for.
Right.
That, that, of all the presentations, that's the one that was immediately most compelling to me.
I don't see the numbers yet, and Chris did a lot of work on it. I don't see the numbers yet shown exactly what he's gonna say. My concern is, and I. exactly what he's going to say, my concern is, and I haven't had a chance to even talk to Matt about this, is that the communication dispatchers that you guys always bring up concerns about, still with four bodies have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime, plus eight thousand dollars in replacement. So if he puts four bodies to try and do a twenty-four-seven at the police department, I'm not sure how he escapes that same amount of overtime, his total overtime in the police office is two hundred thousand, two eleven. I, I, I'm just not sure, I mean, I, I, in my head, it makes perfect sense to do what he wants to do, and I, I support it. I just need to support the numbers, the numbers need to support it, which I haven't yet seen.
I, I, I think they're a little more flexible with police than we are at nine-one-one dispatch. And we have to have one of those certified dispatchers at nine-one-one. He can take a, a, a sergeant, uh, and who's on shift, and stick him in that job to cover it.
And not pay anything.
And not pay any overtime, so there's some of that, which is why I think he was having a hunch about actually how much overtime could he save? Uh, by utilizing it, and that's the number we need to get.
Is there any way in the park and rec person? That they, I mean, the foreman makes certain amounts, that's hard to believe that they don't already have that type of person, right? Uh, I'm just thinking of the seasonal people and things like that, is there any way that part could be reduced?
Well, she was, uh, said, I don't know if she said it here, or she said it to me at one point, that she was willing to cut. She has three seasonal, has difficulty filling it, so it's about thirty thousand dollars. So her argument was if she got this new person to be full-time supervisor under Tony or with Foreman, thirty thousand could go towards that salary, I, I think it was going to be sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
But I, you know, I don't, I don't know that I supported another full-time person either, but I wonder if there's a better way to use that existing thirty thousand somehow? That's in the budget now.
Well, the, the, the work needs, still needs to get done.
Yeah, but she said she never, she never, she never could get the third position built.
Well, we, we, we've, we've filled, you know, it's.
Okay.
Well, we, we filled and unfilled, I mean, people come, people go, we had a couple, but it didn't work out. Uh, over the summer, we had to let go. Uh, it is difficult to fill the position, no doubt about it. However, as I might have said to you before, of the last three or four hires we've had, I, I think every one of them has been somebody that we had for, for summer help first. We got a chance to really vet them and understand if they were good for the team or not. Um, you know, we do have, um, you know, two people, we have, we had two people who, who were working, you know, um, presumably may come back again, we'd advertise for one more, we advertised for two. Um, the model we have is difficult, but it's not untenable, and it's certainly, you know, um, I'm looking at, yeah, twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars. I show a budget of twenty-eight thousand for that position before any increases, um, versus the sixty-two plus benefits that she put in for the new position.
What's the impact on, uh, unemployment compensation since these seasonal workers are entitled to.
There, there is, there is impact on that, we, we do get, we do occasionally get, um, we have recently gotten, um, some impact on that. Um, add a couple of grand here, for sure.
But it's.
Especially if it ends up being a half employee at that point. I could be a little supportive of that, because it, it, you know, I think maybe we could talk to the Board of Ed about, you know, sharing some budget things, because of the way we do the field, I, I don't really have a problem with that, because makes sense for people doing fields to do all the fields. I don't have as much a problem with it, but it is a budgetary item. Uh, and I do think they are so varied and all over town on a daily basis, I can see where some some supervisory eyes on the wall, that they have some value.
I, I, I appreciate that, uh, one of the things that I'm concerned about is classic span of control, right? Uh, and, you know, the span of control is one thing, if you've got a department head who isn't actually doing the work out in the field, because he is a, you know, he's the foreman.
Watching.
He's, he's the manager for him and et cetera, but he also takes a regular shift, he's doing, you know, so that, that work is in addition to, uh, you know, the management work is in addition to being out there bowling or whatever he's doing, right? So, uh, sounds as if we might want to at least start with, let's put the parking rec body in there with the corresponding offset and see what the numbers look like, and that'd be something we could go to, uh, you know, at, at some point down the line.
Well, and, and then you could even combine that with a half a year thing. You know, get the person hired and everything to take on when summer comes.
Right.
In their case, the half a year is the winter.
Yes, and, and, and that's the time they're off.
January first would be the half a year.
And that's the other point, the other, the, the seasonal people only work the season, you're looking to put on another full-time person. Um, you know, I, I don't know, I could consider, let's see how the rest of the budget goes.
Yeah.
We've got challenges across.
But why don't we, why don't we put that position for the, for sake, it's still gross numbers together, why don't we put that in there?
I'm not attracted to the idea of putting it in there at this point. I mean, we do have somebody who's a supervisor, and I, I realize that that person is a hands-on or whatever, working in the field, but is that because that's that person? I mean, we have a role for a supervisor, if the person we have isn't filling that role.
Oh, he, he, he does that, yes, and, and, and more, that's, he does, he is managing the team. Manages the work, the distribution workload, he manages the ordering of materials, supplies, all of that kind of stuff, well, he, 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 he details them and then somebody.
I just picturing somebody working, you know, whether in, in his office or mowing some lawn someplace, and something, you have a crew or two or three crews simultaneously in different parts of the town, who, are there foremen or something?
There were no foremen.
No, he was a supervisor, he's, he's out there, with, either with him or, or, he's checking on.
Well, he's checking on, if he's doing, you know, either in the office or downtown here, and you got two or three crews over a long town. You know, if, you know, covering a lot of mine, I mean, you can't tell me he's seeing or talking or touching each one of those crews on a daily basis.
In the morning, I mean, I have to have him here to, to answer the question, but I mean, my understanding, in the morning, he meets with all of them, assigns them their work, and he goes out.
They do so.
Well, he's one of the hopes, he's, he's out there, believe me, we've had some issues, and he.
I'm saying, you know, he's not doing it, it's not where I'm trying to go with it, I'm just trying, it seems like a stretch. Let's, let's, let's spend too much of your time on it, but, you know, I think I, I could support it if the rest of the budget works out.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, if, if, so let, if. Beg forgiveness on this, but let's, let's include it, knowing that it's something that could come out, if, you know, that'd be one of the first things that we wind up taking up with pressure.
Okay.
Let's, you know, if, if there's a demonstrable need for it, okay, and, and we can't do without it, that's one thing. But if, if it is, if this is, I'm not going to call it a luxury item, or, but if something that would be, would be, make the organization more effective, and there's a corresponding offset, because we're going to eliminate one seasonal employee, uh, it, you know, turns into what, half a body.
I have a strong reaction about, I don't mind giving John extra hours up to thirty, but I have very strong reaction about making it so that it qualifies for benefits, because that, that's not the job, that's not what, I mean, then it should be a thirty-five hour position. Uh, it just seems crazy to me to put benefits to that position. Yeah. And he didn't take it with that in mind, you know, um.
It makes sense, I agree with that.
I just don't see that, you know, I, I, I just, I don't, I have no problem budgeting up to twenty-nine and a half, I mean, it's just not benefits.
I, I don't have that conversation, like, we can cap it, that's.
How about the assistant position, the part-time assistant that was added, that, that was requested?
Well.
You eliminated that, you eliminated that.
You eliminated that, okay.
Right, no, that's, he's got, he gets support over here in the office, so. From, from our staff, but John will also most likely be moving over to.
Major Lathrop, because he, he doesn't really, I mean, he sits at that desk.
Yeah, he's in the bullpen, and when he needs to make confidential calls or something, he goes into the conference room. So that, and he'll get, he'll get admin support from Adam, Janice's, Janice's admin, so. All right, twenty-nine and a half.
Do they work together, all right?
Um, Janice and John. They, they, yeah, actually, they've, uh, most recently demonstrated an ability to, to work together with the, uh, warrant tech. John, uh, John's been working with them, uh, trying to, trying to identify what the FEMA, you know, uh, FEMA stuff is.
Like Janice and the rest of the.
Department. Oh, no question, that will, that will be recorded.
Kind of Berlin Wall.
Uh, they're factions, they're factions. And personalities are personalities, you see.
Is Kevin going to move to Major Lathrop too?
Uh, not at this point, not at this point. I don't see reason.
I put the biography on Major Lathrop.
The biography?
Yeah, you keep saying Major Lathrop.
That's just the name of that house, I, when I came in nineteen seventy-seven, the library was using it as a children's department. And it was called the Major Lathrop House, so it's, that's in, in my head, you know.
I'm thinking World War One, we'll have to get to the bottom of this.
I'm sure, I'm.
No, it's, it's, it's on the green, this, this has to be Revolutionary War or.
Probably, yes, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm intrigued, I will report back at the next meeting.
We'll all have traces.
All right, so.
Thomas Selleck, he works at our time.
Should we go write your comments?
We'll get it for you.
Yeah, so let, let, let's, let's, let's get a baseline here, we're going to add, uh, John to twenty-nine and a half. We're going to, um, put in the, uh, parking rec, uh, with the corresponding offset, um, for the seasonal employee. Uh, we're going to put the, uh, dispatcher in, uh, with a corresponding offset, uh, uh, overtime, if in fact that's real.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which I assume is real to some degree, maybe not as, as, as large as I'd like it. Uh, and then we're going to include the permit tech on, uh, this side, uh, on the, uh, Town Hall South side. And, uh, rewrite a job description and a, a salary bump for the, uh, uh, I'm going to call it administrative team lead. All right, that's a baseline, so we're all operating from the same set.
And I'm sorry, Matt, what do we have with Public Works then?
Um, Public Works, at this point, I don't know, I'm open for discussion on it. We give them a mechanic for half a year, see what the numbers look like, uh, and we can take it out if we need to. Because quite honestly, but, but by the third meeting, we're going to be looking for things to take out.
Yeah, sure.
And we, we have, we, we've already done some work, Ray Jane's already done some stuff. And then let's also not forget that we have another hurdle, which is finance. And, yeah, particularly with the Board of Ed, uh, uh, increase of cost, so. And Mary Jane has some preliminary numbers on what our numbers are, as they, as they, they're not as, they're not, they're not as bad as Board of Ed, but not great.
Um, I just, um, how long are we, I, I thought we were going to be here till twelve, but maybe we're going to be here longer.
Well, I'm going to start going through it now, so.
Okay, well, I just need to leave at the latest by maybe quarter or one.
Okay, MJ?
All right. All right, so I have some opening remarks first, so that you know what, what I have here. Um, so the, the numbers based on the operating budget that the department heads presented represented a six-point-one-two percent increase. When I add in a flat capital, it brings that number to five-point-nine-eight, so that's where my spreadsheet starts, the one that I provided. The changes that I'm going to review, bring it down to five-point-one-zero. Your spreadsheet is five-one-point-two, but I, I added in, I, I made one change, um, since then, that I'll review when we get there. So when you're going through my, this particular, um, spreadsheet that I, uh, downloaded from ClearGov, the totals for the department are on top. And the detail is below, and I'm only showing you detail for those departments that I've made changes to since the department head meetings. Um, things that aren't in here, um, as, as kind of discussed, uh, police overtime savings. Um, obviously, the permit tech is not in here, it was not in my numbers before today. Um, John in EDC is at thirty hours, and you just brought him down to twenty-nine point five, so that's one change. Um, and after we've made final salary changes, I will reduce the FICA amount, but it, it, I, I didn't want to make changes to FICA without you having approving salaries up and down, because that number will change every time you make, you know, a, a, a decision, so that number will come down.
MJ, just a quick qualifying question, Ryan. You said, um, the six-point-one-two where the budget's as presented, so that would include two positions at, uh, Public Works and two positions at, um, Police Department and one position at Park and Rec, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, it did not include anything, oh, it also included, I believe, the increases in the Building Department, part-time and new. So we haven't discussed that, so, um, that's my next comment, that my budget does, addresses all changes that Matt and I discussed yesterday, it did not address the parking rec foreman, which, so that is still in there. It does, my numbers didn't, um, change, didn't represent the permit tech or the team leader, but we now have them in there with the new numbers, um, we, we now, we just got them. Um, and, and also the Building Department requested a new part-time person plus increasing those salaries, so we didn't discuss the Building Department either. Um.
So trying to keep track of where the five-point-one whatever is going to go, you kind of lost there on what, what was going to be added and subtracted and what wasn't.
Well, uh, we, I haven't gone through that yet.
But, but, but Mary, Mary Jane, I thought you said that these numbers would include the changes that I made to salaries.
Yes, they do, yes.
So, so some of what you said is, is not correct, because we do have, in, in the numbers I submitted this morning, we do have the permit tech, we do have the elevation of, of the team leader. Uh, we still have the parking rec person, uh, we've eliminated the, as Matt has already mentioned, we've eliminated the detective. Uh, we eliminated John Torres's clerical person, we have a half person in for a mechanic right now. And I think that covers it.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Right. Right, uh, we, we hadn't made any decisions on parking rec health and building, that's, uh, before my numbers went through. That's what I meant, meant, if that did, wasn't clear.
And there's no change in my numbers for building?
Correct.
Yeah.
My, my point was, we didn't discuss the Building Department increases, they're all still in there.
All right.
That was the point I was trying to make. Are we ready to move for, so to bring it down to the five-point-one, we have to go to my spreadsheet and go department by department, so you can see the changes that are made. So I, I tried to, I tried to make the spreadsheet somewhat clear, the, um, the departments that are highlighted are changes, and you'll see some shading, um, in, in one of the columns, and you'll see the details. So the first one is information systems. Now, the reason we've made a change in information systems is because we currently, I think I had made this point during the department meetings, but it wasn't in the numbers. We, um, promoted one of the employees in IT to a new position now, so that is reflected in the new numbers going forward. That's the change in IT. The next is insurance. The change we've made here, if you see highlighted, um, we are now back with Karma. We anticipate receiving a distribution of equity, although we have no idea what that number might be. The number I have there is an average of the equities that we've received to date.
Meaning thirty-four thousand?
No, the fifty-one thousand eight ninety-three, under insurance.
Okay.
So that's an average of what we receive, hopefully, you know, I, I don't know how quickly we might know what that number is, but that's what that number represents.
So we had briefly left Karma and went to Travelers, we'd come back to Karma and now, next year,
meaning beginning this coming July, the budget you're working on, we will be eligible for equity distribution. That won't be announced until June.
Which is why we're using an average of.
You must be happy that we're back to Karma, since you're on the board.
And I'm back on the board, yeah.
We just didn't like Travelers?
Me, well.
Karma came back to the table with a sharper pencil.
Oh, they sure did.
Okay, I didn't want to waste time, just, just in side comments, I.
It's been easier, it's been easier work with Karma.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the next department is legal. Um, we have some funds that we carried over from prior years, uh, that we didn't use, uh, that we have set aside and continued in force. I applied fifty thousand dollars of that to the legal request, um, bringing that budget down even. I applied fifty thousand dollars of that to the legal request, um, bringing that budget down even further.
Yeah, and that's not out of our undesignated rainy day fund. This is continued in force that we're now gonna use.
It's right, correct.
Sounds good.
Yeah, this is reserved account for Legal, so. Now, ob- obviously, uh, we, we're doing this with the anticipation that next year, the, uh, assessment rebau claims are gonna go down more, but we just won't realize the benefit of it budgetarily, because we're using this one-time, uh, revenue source to, to supplement it. But, you know, these are, these are, these are extreme times, so we're, we're looking at everywhere we can.
Right, right, and, and I did not drain the account from carried in force, um, so that there would be additional funds, um, that we could use in the following year as well, if we don't use them during, between, between this year and next year. Uh, the next line item is Planning and Zoning, and I have a change in full-time salaries. Gotta see what that is.
That was my error.
Oh, okay, alright.
We, we had shown, for some reason, we did the numbers, it, it took the increase from last year, put it in Frank Harchin, and, and increased again. That's left me negotiated, so that's part of reserve personnel, such as zero, so it was about, decreased about three thousand dollars there.
Alright. Uh, the next is EDC. You've already discussed this. My number, numbers represent the six hours. So we'll have to adjust that, um, to the five and a half each, each week, if that's what we do, um, and takes out the part-time salary line. So that, that net, that budget will come down, uh, a little bit more when we change it to twenty-nine point five hours instead of thirty. Uh, the next is the Police, uh, salaries, uh, it's all of, I removed the detective. So, um, the new salary sheets that you have should reflect that, and it's reflected here in the salaries. Again, no extra reduction in overtime savings as of yet, but we're still working on those numbers. Uh, the next is Public Works, um, full-time salaries, we removed, um, the maintainer, and we put the mechanic in half-year starting January one. So that's what this new number represents, and I believe Mitch's sheets should show the same number. In addition to that.
I'm sorry, what is the mechanic's, what, what is the yearly salary for a new mechanic?
Seventy-one thousand. So it's now thirty-five-five, approximately.
In addition, um, in the Public Works budget, similar to the Legal budget, we have money that we set aside for SALT, um, through carried in force. So I applied fifty thousand dollars here as well, um, with approval from the Public Works Director.
And what do you have total in the, uh, continued in force? You've got?
I have more than that. I think I had, yeah, I, yeah, there's still more. I'm only taking about half out of each of them, so that, we have money moving forward. So if, if twenty-two, if, if the next month or so is eh, bad and we need some additional funds, there are still funds in carried in force that we can use.
Mary Jane, you didn't, you didn't highlight, but as we discussed this morning, there's also a reduction in the part-time salaries for Public Works, based on my discussion with Dave Castro, about five thousand.
Oh, that's right. It, I see that. I did forget to highlight it. I apologize. The twenty-two thousand, two twenty-three, twenty-five should be, um, highlighted. Thank you, thank you, Mitch.
I know, well, we're, are we back to Park and Rec?
Um, we're done with Public Works?
Okay, yeah.
Well, we're not at Public, we're not there yet. Hold on, just a sec. So the next is Town Properties. You're not showing it on your spreadsheet, um, because I just plugged that in, um, this morning. We're gonna take an eighty-six hundred dollar reduction for EV charging revenue. So their overall budget will be a one point three eight percent increase. Um, and the new sheets that I will send to you will show that. That was, we just discussed the other day that we had missed that revenue offset. Uh, the next is the Health Department, um, so this is the salaries. So this, um, includes the permit tech and the team leader, the increase for DARCA. Right, Mitch?
Yep.
So even though the permit tech is gonna be shared, the Health Department has got the full salary in their line?
I gotta put somewhere, so, I, I put in Health, because, just, I could move that to zoning, just spread things out a little bit, if it makes ever sense.
I just wanna be clear, that's all, so. What is the permit tech salary per year?
Forty-four thousand.
And, and what is the increase you're thinking for DARCA?
About five, six thousand, but that's gotta be negotiated. There's no, I just threw a number in, there's no corresponding classification at this point. It's been decided, the, the permit tech, we have a classification, so I could plug in a number with, with the, with the team leader position elevation. We've got, I just plugged a number in, so we may have to cover the rest of the reserve personnel, or even cut it back, or add to it, whatever you wanna do, but I just plugged the number in there.
I don't, I don't see it increasing significantly, maybe, maybe more than.
I think it wouldn't go higher than that, no.
No, it's not.
I mean, does she think, does she know that?
She knows about it, yes, but it's not been discussed with me. It's not been, the, the union has not had discussion with this, with me yet either.
So she doesn't have any number? I hope she doesn't have any number in her.
Well, I had to give you guys something.
But, but does she know it?
No.
No.
Yeah, the number is for the position, not for the person.
Right.
You can tell me to take it out, put all reserve personnel, want?
I think that would be best, because we don't know. And we, I think we've all decided it's not gonna be higher than five.
We'll go, we'll go back to her current, current salary, and we'll just put reserve personnel, which is where I had it in the first place.
That's good.
Okay, done with Health?
All set. Uh, the next item is Human Services. I'm not showing any detail. All I'm showing is that we will flat fund them this year, and we will allow them to determine where corresponding reductions should come from their detail. Just my recommendation.
Do you by any chance have last year's numbers for them, that, just, just the, you know, the, the number we ended up with last year?
It's in here.
Yeah, it's the one, it's the one hundred nineteen six ninety-one. It should be in the, in the report that.
Oh, so that's not what they asked for? For the one forty, okay, alright, I'm sorry, thank you.
Right, so the department request was the one forty-one, I'm bringing them down to one nineteen, which is where they are in current year.
Okay, alright.
Again, just my recommendation, you guys can do whatever you want.
Right.
Uh, in Park and Rec, um, so in Park and Rec is the Parks Foreman, right, Mitch? That number's already in there?
It's still, it's still in there, yeah.
Okay, so the, um, what we did, uh, in the current year, fiscal year twenty-five, we have a sixty thousand dollar program account subsidy, which of course the Park and Rec Commission didn't propose. I can't blame them, um, but we put it back in. So we're proposing to take the, another sixty thousand dollars from their program account, um, to offset salaries.
And even though they can, they really have spent their program account down, right?
Yeah, again, we, we, it's just a proposal at the moment, we, we can, you know, do a deeper dive in it for next week's meetings.
Yeah, well, I guess everybody looked at it and you.
Yeah, and, and I thought they were using a lot of it, but.
They, they, they have been, yeah, we'll have to, this was just, you know, we, we talked about this yesterday, Matt and I, we put it in just for discussion.
I'm, I'm, look, I'm for spending it. I just wanted to see the overall, that's all.
Yeah, by, by next week, I'll have more time to, um, you know.
And I think we've arrived at a rationale relative to that, that there is an expectation that, uh, the program fees will support salaries, because those salaries are, are, are spent in support of the program, so it should actually be a hard cost. Probably should be even more than what's being charged off, because you've got the two, two coordinators, right? Don't they do mostly program work?
Um, well, I think the, they do program work for camps and stuff like that, but I think a lot of the program fees come from your instructors that, that are in a separate account, right, Mary Jane, they're a special fund?
Right, so there's, there's, there's two reductions in this budget. If you look at my spreadsheet, just above the sixty thousand is a seventeen thousand dollar reduction, uh, that's the percentage that we take from all of the program fee revenue to offset the administration of, of the program, so it's really two different things.
How, how was it that the, and sorry if you mentioned this, how are the part-time salaries going down, albeit slightly? With an increase in minimum wage and?
So, two things to keep in mind. One is that the part-time salaries are going down slightly because the fact we've eliminated that part-time, one part-time maintainer. Right?
Part-time maintainer.
To, as part of the full-time, makes that full-time of work. The other reason is because everything else is in, even with minimum wage salaries, all, all in the, um, uh, uh, reserve personnel.
Got it, so the four sixteen represents going down, uh, uh, one maintainer? It's four sixteen to four sixteen.
Hold on.
Yeah, it's always four hundred.
On, on Mary Jane's, it'll be different on yours, on Mary Jane's.
Mine should balance to Ma- to Mitch's.
Um, it is, she raised the seasonal part-time. That does go through, that doesn't go on the scale, those who are on the minimum wage, that went up by thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
There's a twenty percent increase in that one line item called seasonal part-time, which are people that I don't track. It's your camp counselors, your lifeguards, your, you know, other aquatic staff, uh, all those folks.
But is, but is there a corresponding offset on the numbers Mary Jane has for the elimination of one, uh, seasonal maintainer?
Yeah, that's in here too.
My num- my number matches Mitch's.
Okay.
So the fact, so what was the thirty thousand dollar jump for me, seasonal?
Do you have this, if you bring up your, if you bring up the salary sheets that are on board pack, you can, can see them.
That count for thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I, I did, I did eliminate, the, the, the one seasonal, one of the three parks maintainer seasonals is eliminated in my budget, pretty much offset by what the increases in what they call seasonal part-time, which is other folks that we just talked about.
But I wonder, I know this is really getting kind of min- minute, but did she just throw in thirty thousand dollars to get more hours? Because the minimum wage only went up a dollar, right? It didn't go up a dollar, it would let. We were paying ahead of minimum wage anyway.
Right, and we still are.
What do we hire, fifties, fifty or sixties, uh?
Quite, quite, quite a few, right? Quite a few, and then, and then it also includes the increases for everybody else. So when that person goes up a dollar, or whatever it is, we're also increasing most, most of the, the returning staff by a dollar. And, you know, when somebody's making sixteen or seventeen dollars an hour, now they're making eighteen, the percentage is higher.
Okay, so everybody, whether they were at minimum wage or not, every, everybody in that group is gonna go up a little.
It's a cascading event.
Okay.
Which it is every year, but it's been exacerbated by the fact that the lowest people, sixteen thirty-five is the new, uh, minimum wage. We've put down sixteen fifty as a minimum wage for a town employee, but that was the second wage for somebody else, and if they come back next year, they're gonna go up to seventeen fifty. So it just, uh, goes right down the line.
So, and we're already starting nine thousand dollars higher, because in the last year column, we have that board of finance reduction, it's not allocated anywhere.
That's correct.
So we're already kind of in a hole.
Right, we didn't specifically apply that reduction to any one person, so, but the reduction is there.
So comparing the other lines in such minute detail doesn't really make any sense, because already something was off by night or split out.
But at least the detail shows you the thought put into it as to which positions are at what amounts.
Yes.
I, I should know this, but is, are we at a point with our legislature that minimum wage is just going to go up every single year?
It is, because it's, it's indexed now.
It's been indexed.
It will go up in January again, next.
So unless we have a, the, the, the zero inflation here. In which case, there might not be the change.
Correct.
That's a state thing, not a federal thing.
Federal, federal minimum wage is seven and a quarter.
Which is preposterous on the other end. But, but we, we're, when I feel like we, the state has caught up.
Do we have a percentage number for that state increase?
What's the increase in Connecticut minimum wage for twenty twenty-five?
Well, it's sixty, fifteen ninety, uh, what? Fifteen sixty-nine to sixteen thirty-five.
So the Department of Labor's got a nice little grid. January, it was fifteen sixty-nine, yeah? January twenty-four and January twenty-five.
Four, four percent increase. I did that correctly.
Looks like it's about seventy cents. About seventy cents.
It came over four point two percent.
But.
A lot, a lot more the year before was like, was almost, was over six percent.
Dollar on the base gets long.
Your comments before about it being a cascading event, when the minimum wage goes up, do we adjust?
Yes. When it comes to the, we have a, I, I don't have with you.
Here's my question.
I'm sorry.
When the minimum wage goes up, do we adjust the rest of the wages?
Yes, we do.
By the same percentage?
Well, here's the, here's the issue. We have, we have a set schedule with Park and Rec that I go through, I used to do it with Rick and Ellen, now I do it with Pam and Ellen. Each year, to come up with rates for, you start at the bottom with your gate guards and escape guards, and then you go up. But, but the bottom, the bottom person was sixteen fifty an hour. The bottom person is now seventeen dollars an hour, right? Where, 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 where it was sixteen dollars an hour, now sixteen fifty. So the person who was making sixteen twenty-five last year is not gonna make sixteen twenty-five again next year, they're gonna go sixteen seventy-five or seventeen dollars. So it just, it goes, everybody goes up by that.
Question.
I'm sorry, that.
Question is, the state has this minimum increase.
Yep.
And we don't have that many minimum employees. I'm not talking just the, uh, Park and Rec.
Okay.
Seasonal people, I'm talking about our total payroll.
Yep.
Okay. When the minimum goes up, do we adjust the rest of the?
No, no, we, we have, everyone else is on, on, on a scale or a contract that gets adjusted through negotiations. We don't make, we don't make a contract.
Based on, okay, cascade is for.
It's for that.
Minimum wage.
The cascade, I'm talking about, talks, he's talking about that one line that Mary Jane's referring to, or I'm referring to in Park and Rec. The hundred, the hundred, but the hundred and forty thousand going to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, where it was, when, when, from one fifty, one eight to one eighty-two five, that's the, what I'm referring to. But no, we don't give like an automatic, what you're thinking of, Charles, is like an automatic cost of living adjustment. The state does that. Which reminds me, the request has come through, the pensioners, as to whether we're gonna give a call this year too, just so you're aware.
I'm just thinking of the rest of the negotiation, I mean. Last year it was even higher, right?
It was. For certain, certain salaries.
If we did give her, um, that new position, her, the Park and Rec, if we gave Park and Rec that new position, would it, would it, um, impact thirty thousand overtime?
It's already accounted for that.
Okay.
No, not, not overtime. You've already accounted for the.
She kept, she kept the overtime flat. She kept the overtime flat.
Okay. This is the overtime line. That was different, but I just meant, could that possibly go down, but, uh, no.
Is there anything with one more person on the crew? Could possibly go up?
Oh, thanks.
Uh, just, you know, the overtime is based on, so the overtime is mostly based on those maintainers.
Yeah.
Right? When they have to come in for storms, when they have to come this, that, that's where the overtime comes in. So if I have a seventh full-time person,
Yeah.
as opposed to the part-timers, and we only call it emergency, that, that potentially could go up. I don't think it's that significant.
We're not gonna have any storms, yes.
Okay.
And, uh. Just because it decided to snow on holiday this year, didn't help me as far as.
So Mitch, has there been any impact to the, you know, four-day work week, um, with the, with the maintainers?
Um, the impact has been the fact that, from what I've heard, that they were very, um, receptive of it. Um, and we'll probably go back to it again, this, this, they, they pay much difference. Um, and we'll probably go back to it again, this, this, they, they paid much difference summer. I'm not sure if Pam is planning on making them year-round, or whether they, they definitely wanna go back to doing that again in the summer. He's working a ten-hour day for four days a week, we made all kinds of adjustments on Mondays and Fridays. You know, it worked, I was a little concerned, but it worked for them, uh, because, um, they were first of all willing to put in the extra hours.
Well, not extra hours, but longer hours.
Longer hours during the day, during each day, um, and also because the current supervisor, uh, was pretty much here. Five days a week, everybody else was working four days a week, he was here on and off, but I'd say four and a half days a week. Um, to keep up, so. Uh, okay. But yeah, the answer is, it, it worked out, as, as long as the fields got cut by the weekend, didn't really matter which days, but he had some, the way they did it, they had somebody here five days a week. Half the crew worked Monday through Thursday, and half the crew worked Tuesday through Friday. So they half had the Monday holiday, and half had the Friday holiday for three weekends, and, um, it, it did work out.
Working right, we're done? Benefits and pension? Healthcare, right? Pension isn't going up, right?
Not unless you're gonna do a COLA.
Um, I can say with some degree of certainty that probably won't happen.
We will see the numbers, we will see the numbers next month on that, if you work to, what's your COLA, we'll pay.
Mitch, remind me, does that only get triggered if they request it, or we have to?
It gets triggered by the, by the contract, by the police contract, we are obligated to look at it every two years.
So it comes up on our schedule?
Comes up regardless, right?
And, and we'll have a vote at a meeting. So. Uh, yesterday afternoon, I participated in, uh, a working group within the Comptroller's Office on MERS two dot O. And also a MERS cash balance account. Uh, very preliminary, I can't share it yet, but, um, in the MERS two dot O, which is a traditional defined benefit plan. Um, they have taken out COLAs. And they've taken out overtime. So.
There's also a bill that's resurfaced again this year. That's going to, that's going to require towns to go back to pensions for.
Dead on the right, dead on the right. Marty, who may get it out of the Senate, it's not coming out of the House.
Good to know.
Those two aren't getting along very well. In case anybody's. Keep score at home.
Marty.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about that bill.
Mr. Looney's been there a long time.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Like a party gift. Okay.
What heading are we under right now?
We were.
Mary Jane.
Where were our pensions and benefits?
Right here, page three.
Yeah, you're not gonna see.
Changed.
I didn't show the detail, cause it's not changed, but all, all the detail is in the prior meetings. On the fourteenth and the fifteenth. For today, I was only showing the detail of things that were changed, just to try to make it easier. I got like two minutes left to my report, if you, if we're done with benefit.
Yeah.
The last thing, um, the last thing I did was, uh, make capital flat for the year. We, we haven't gone through the capital line items, but just for discussion purposes, I brought that number flat. Um, so with all of the things, and, and while you were chatting, I moved EDC down to twenty-nine point five hours. Um, first I'll have to confer with Mitch, but, um, I'm showing total reductions of four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. And an increase of five point oh nine percent, so that, um, like I said, I moved that to twenty-nine point five hours, but it does not include any, um. Reduction in police overtime, that's the only, my only other note, um, of things to, to check on at the moment. So we're at five point oh one, five point oh nine overall with flat capital.
On a roughly, on a roughly forty-nine million dollar municipal budget, right? Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So to, so to get it below four, we'd need to find almost five million dollars. Is that, math correct? No.
No, not that much.
No, that's way too high, right?
Yeah.
You want, you want a four percent increase?
Well, just, it's just what, what's the gross number to get below four?
Five hundred thousand.
Oh, I, I added, I added a digit there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a zero.
Just a little.
I could go to Congress and thrive, apparently.
A little outside.
A millionaire, a millionaire, pretty soon you're talking about real money. Every person, right? That's awesome.
Okay, uh, that would be an admirable beginning goal.
So it's about four hundred some odd thousand. It's a lot. Seriously.
So the debt service went up six thousand, I mean, it's not a lot, but.
Yeah, why did it go?
I wanted it to go down.
Um, well, as I reported last time, the, uh, debt for bonding is flat, that represents the increase in the debt for the Mulberry Point Water, Mulberry Point Water. Lease. The actual debt, it's, the actual debt itself for our bonding is flat.
But there's corresponding sort of special revenues for that, right? I don't think folks local to that pay.
Correct.
Surcharge for that? So somewhere.
I take that back, I'm sorry, I, I'm gonna take, I take that back, sorry, I'm saying the wrong thing. It's the, it's the energy performance lease, wrong, wrong payment, wrong lease payment, the energy performance.
Okay.
Sorry, I got too many of those in my brain.
No worries.
That, so that's the, I mean, I can make it flat, I just have to use more credits on the debt side, it is easily done, it's six thousand dollars. I can make it flat if you want that flat.
We gotta come to five hundred thousand, we'll take anything that you can do.
So if we're really looking for things, um, uh, you know, we, we have a couple. I'm gonna throw Mitch and I under the bus here, but we do have a couple line items, you know, that we do have.
Under the bus last year, I think.
I know, I always do.
I think you weren't at a meeting, that's what I was.
That's okay, I, I throw us under the bus. So, um, you know, we have money set aside in committed fund balances, um, for, uh, sick leave. Um, which that was one of the items you asked about, um, and for reserve for personnel, um, we, you know, those are items we can reduce. In the general, in our twenty-six budget, because we have money set aside, um, so we have some reductions we can make in those two areas. It's, I mean, I don't, I only have a hundred and seventy-seven in reserve for personnel, but it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we, we could use that, um. And retirement sick leave, I don't know what we have in the budget, but, um, I have money.
Wouldn't you save a hundred and seventy-seven in reserve for personnel from the current, from the twenty twenty-four budget?
We have, right.
From, that's, yeah, that, that's an accumulation of, of pluses and minuses over the years, it's the, the net that we have left.
But we realize if we use this here portion of that, we have a hole for next year. Yeah, but, but in terms of what we set aside for reserve for personnel for this year, it was like nine hundred some odd thousand, given the number of contracts.
Right.
Right.
And, and the risk here is if we say, well, let's find seventy-five thousand out of that. That we're gonna be in the middle of some final negotiation and come up short with the ability to cover that. Is that, is that the equation that we're looking at?
No, no, if, if you, if, if we reduce reserve for personnel in the budget. Because we have this money set aside, we would first use all the budget money, and if that runs out, then we turn to the fund balance money. We don't lose, we, we don't come up short seventy-five, we just use it from a different pot of money.
Got you.
Fair enough.
We have night under put aside for the negotiations at the moment, yeah.
Yep.
And never present one percent, I prefer not to say that on camera.
I think we should have that conversation off camera.
Agreed.
Can we go into executive session now, as long as we don't blow on anything?
Yeah, as long as we, as long as we don't take any action.
Yeah.
Uh, we didn't post this, is that being exact? So, oh no, you only need.
We can add that to one of the agendas for next week.
Yeah, all right, let me ask this question. Is it more or less than the state's number this year?
That's a ballpark.
Let's have that discussion executive session.
Yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll add that for executive session next week.
I think one reduction, one reduction we can really take is the reduction in retirement sick leave. We can bring that down to, um, where we are today at ten thousand, um, we can easily take that extra thirty from fund balance. That one, that one, we can.
Plug, plug that in.
Yep. Sorry, Mitch.
That's fine.
We talked about these already, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue there is that, you know, each year we try to project. How many people will retire, probably years ago, it got overextended, people didn't retire. Yeah, we just, you know, we've got money in that, that account, so.
Can I ask another, uh, third, third rally question? Are we, how certain are we that we're, that we're stuck with the medical number that they're throwing at us, is there any more?
We'll know better Tuesday night.
We'll know better Tuesday night, so.
Well, and we. And I'll just add that we're always looking at that number, so, you know, every month that goes by, that unfortunately, because of our, our claims being higher. Normally, as each month goes by, sometimes our claims get lower, our projections get better, you, you know, you're, we're not seeing claims going down. So to have our projection change much is, is not gonna happen, but we look at those numbers on a monthly basis. So at any point that we can provide a low, a, a lower or better number, based on the data we have. Not any decisions you guys might make for fund balance, but based on the data, we would present those, um, right away, and, and we've done that in the past.
So you'll have one more month in for sure, before we have to act on the budget.
Correct.
And, and as I understand it, is it, it's a rolling twelve or a rolling thirteen-month average, isn't that the one, so, you know, what's, what, what is coming off that?
Right.
Thirteen versus.
Probably, we had two, we had two very good years.
Right.
We, we had pretty much flat the last two years. We had, we had very small decreases for our employees and what they put in. And this year has just been an anomaly that's just, doesn't make sense, I just can't explain it, neither can Joe.
We could, we could.
It's not just the town, it's not just one department, we're seeing it across the board with the Board of Ed, you know, with us, the Board of Ed right across the board. There's, there's a huge increase in claims in this past twelve-month period, especially, at least since July.
Doesn't Anthem have any ability to give us any kind of analysis of that, you know, sort of where, whether it's something non-recurring or anything?
Well, we get an idea from our stop loss, you know, as to, and, and, and Joe Spurgeon, who will be with us on Tuesday, you know. He's able to look at and say, well, there was a huge one here, but the person's no, that, that, that individual is no longer active, which means that A. The person or the family member has left employment, or B, they passed away. Let's face it, a lot of the, the large costs in healthcare are the end of life. And, um, you know, that happens, so then he'll make an adjustment this way, but then next year, there's somebody else that, that falls. So it's, it's really, it's really tricky, and it's, it's a moving target, and, you know, we're just subject, as Mary Jane said, we're subject to our own numbers, what, what our claims have been.
So, uh, I'm hoping that Joe Spurgeon is prepared to answer the, you know, question that'll come from at least one member of the Board of Finance, which is, uh, when is it time for us to move to a non-self-insured plan? All right? Uh, that will come from somebody.
Hear that, Mary Jane?
Yeah, we'll have to remember to bring that up at our, and when we meet with him.
I think he, he needs to be prepared to answer that question, um, and, uh, you know, it's the, the, the state plan is the one that's gonna be brought up as the, as the model to take a look at. Particularly since.
Yep.
Last year, they were only a one or two percent increase, although we were flat last year, so we beat them last year, who knows what's gonna.
I heard they went up significantly as well, I haven't seen the actual numbers this year, yeah. Uh, but Joe, Joe.
Joe will have that.
He'll have that.
Right, the, the other, the other question that will come from the Board of Finance is, when or how should we change the parameters for our stop loss?
Right. All right, uh, MJ.
Yep.
Let's go back to the department heads. And ask them what they would do. Uh, how they would accommodate, uh, a one or a two percent, uh, cut. Should we say they're not personnel budget, uh, they're not salary line item, or should we leave that, should we leave it in there?
I think you leave it in there.
What do you mean, leave it in there?
That's part of where they might get, take the percentage out.
Anywhere.
Let them figure it out.
Do we do one, do we do, do we give them a couple of hours, one, two, and three?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, if they have to sit down and look at it.
A lot, a lot of your department heads, no, not the ones you've been discussing most, because some of them only have two or three employees and they're, you know.
Understood, yeah.
The salary office applies, that's about all they have.
That means it's a lower number to get to.
That's my question, that's, am I asking every department head?
I think you are, um. I don't wanna have anybody think that they don't have shared burden on this.
All right, and are we in agreement, um, with the recommendation that human services should come in flat for me to ask them how they would like to do that? Or we wanna hold off on that?
I'm, I'm fine with flat, uh, owing to the fact that we put a million dollars into the nonprofit sector over the last year, eighteen months, and, um. I, and I do know that Guilford Foundation has been steadily increasing their contributions into that market, so.
Yeah, it, it makes less and less sense to me that we're doing. I would even, I'd be okay with even reducing it beyond that, like.
Let's leave it flat for now, it's always something we can talk.
Yeah.
All right, I, I'll at least.
Reducing other budgets by some percentage, then we reduce it by that percentage when we look at it, you know what I mean? If everybody else has to cut two percent, then.
Well, everybody, everybody's cut two percent, everybody's cutting two percent against their original, their request.
We've already brought them, we've already knocked twenty thousand off.
They're, they're, they're an outlier.
Yeah, well, they have people out of their existing one-twenty that they, that they were not expecting to include coming here.
Right.
So, to not to cut those out of it.
Yep.
Might make sense, but we can, and I just wanna go back for a second to the department head position. If we didn't do that, what exactly, what, what would happen? What's not getting done, or what would be worse, what, what would happen?
I, I just remembered, I don't know whether she said this to me personally once over an informal conversation, or whether she said it at the presentation, so I'm not sure. I thought she, what she said to me was, she is, it's like he's split in half between being called back to the building to deal with whatever falls under the purview of his job.
Yeah.
Versus trying to be out and supervise it and making sure that the things are getting done.
So that's what's happening, but therefore what?
I guess that new person would be more doing the outside supervising, he'd be more inside, I don't know.
So if we didn't have the new person, he'd still be doing that, he'd still be splitting his time, I mean, are things not getting done because of it, or, um. You know, I, I don't understand the, that, that argument for this, is what I'm saying.
I think it was, Pam's not here to defend this, but I think it was mostly the fact that they looked at the Public Works Department, see the department director. Well, the director, and they have road fore, two road foremen and one mechanic foreman. And who, all three of them pretty much have six or seven people underneath them, reporting to the director. Now, in this case, you have a director, you have a supervisor, who's got now, if you include the part-time people, ten people, if you make this one, you know, it'd still be about ten people, but two or, two or three are only seasonal. Um, having that standard control himself, try to run that whole section of the department without somebody under him, um, being a foreman.
I get that, but if, if it's not, if that's not working, then that's one conversation, but what's not working?
Is there?
What's not working?
I think it's working with a lot of stress, I think.
Is there, well, what about taking the model that we're just looking at for the town hall cell, and looking at one of the existing positions and elevating that a little bit? And maybe not call it a foreman, but I don't know what, um, you know, you, you, you up the sound. You know, you, you, you up the salary of one of the existing people that they can take on a little more.
Administrative.
Field, well, administrative or field supervision, I don't know. I mean, whether or not the existing staff, one of them would have that qualification, but I mean, you know, that's kind, you know, that's a lot less money.
Right, but again, what is the thing that's not getting done?
Reach out to Pam, give us some kind of something. And, and there are some things that I won't say on camera.
Yeah.
Which are applicable here to this specific case.
Okay.
Okay.
What else?
I just, I, I'd like to hear that number of reserves for.
Personnel, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll add that as a, a, agenda item next, twenty-eighth, is that correct?
When I went through the salary numbers, which I may have thought wrong, but it's interesting to take a look at that, because you really see like all the changes related to the change in voting laws. You know, there's like amounts of money in different buckets and it, it adds up, but we're, we're stuck with it, that's the way it is.
Yep.
So, it kind of justifies it, I guess, when you, when you really go through.
I just like.
We were, okay, we were just trying to confirm our next meeting.
Wednesday, it's eight o'clock.
Wednesday on, on eight twenty-nine, and we originally had a placeholder on Friday, the thirty-first, but even if we need a third meeting, it's not happening on the thirty-first, is that my understanding?
We'll agree on something.
Well, I, you know, you know, I'm, I'm starting to rethink this. We're, we, we probably would get the grand list numbers on the thirty-first.
Ah.
So, do we want to dispense with the one on the thirtieth? Do the thirty-first because. Twenty, twenty-ninth, right, twenty-ninth, right, we have it on the thirty-first.
Okay.
Um, we, I, I could check with Becky, but I would assume that she's going to have them ready probably before that, all right? That may weigh in, because I don't, my, my, what I'm hearing is anecdotally around the state that the uh, grand list numbers are dropping because of the new motor vehicle assessment methodology. So the hope is that we have enough growth elsewhere to at least stay even. So.
Are the motor vehicle taxes going to go down?
That's what's happening.
Up the legislature for a long time to help cities.
Oh no, this is, this is the methodology, they're no longer using the Blue Book methodology, they're using a depreciation schedule off the sticker price of the car. The, the M S R P for that particular car. And then they do a depreciation allowance, uh, off of that. That's, that, that's the legislation that passed a year and a half ago, whatever, or last year, two years ago.
It was on the opposite effect, though, but people were paying more, okay.
Had some more things to say there. Yeah, Mary Jane, sorry.
Yeah, MJ, what do you got?
I have a couple more, you know, cogs to throw in the wheel. Um, affordable housing. Affordable housing numbers are not represented here already. I, I'm sure you're not giving them everything, but if there's any part of the budget that you want to give them, they are not in my numbers. That's number one.
Secretary.
Secretary, secretary.
Secretary, right, I'm sorry, yes, the secretary, but on top, except for that. Um, that's number one. Number two, um, I'm not sure if we're going to do capital today, but gonna be, I, I, I can work with the department heads, we need to find five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to reduce that by, so I will work with the department heads on that. And my last one is just to remind you that overall, because of changes in state funding, as we're seeing for this year, our overall revenue is down two point two-six percent, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, that's going to play into the mill rate numbers as well.
I'll, uh, I'll reach out to legislative leadership to see what, to see if those numbers are, are, are gonna hold, because there's, who knows what's gonna happen with the legislative.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have the new biennial bu- budget, so I'm going off of current year, so. But where my numbers stand today, there's a reduction. Just wanted to throw some fun into the mix.
I think in rela- in relation to the numbers for the Affordable Housing Commission, you're not, you, there's not going to be an official budget line anyway in, in twenty-five, twenty-six. And I think that a lot of the things that they thought they needed that cost money could be, um, were possibly going to be able to be addressed through supply issues in other
Yeah.
line items.
Yeah.
I think the only really big thing was some money for produ- production of a video.
Yeah, and they said that they were, they were gonna go after grant money for that.
And, and so, I don't, I think we could lower it, and then if, you know, if, uh, now say we as the commission, if we get some money from an outside source for the video and we need a little more, then they come and make their case to us, we, the Board of Select, you know. So I don't think we need to put too much in for it, yeah, at the moment.
Yeah, I'm not thinking we need to put much at all. I mean, we can, if they need some supplies, they can come to our supply cabinet in the Selectman's Office. Um, the only point for me bringing it up is that we at least have a discussion and, and answer, so.
Cause I, I, you know, I think that point got across, that, you know, there would, there would be support when needed, but there's just not going to be a thirty thousand dollar line put in or what I can see that.
And, and MJ, we have some, uh, uh, we have some reserve for kind of dedicated funds for, uh, planning purposes, if I'm not mistaken. You're muted. You're muted again.
Yeah, yeah, got things going on here. Um, yeah, we do have money set aside, um, that we could use for, for sure.
Got it, okay. Because there was, there, there's discussion, part, part of what they were asking for, I think, will be accommodated by the P O C D. Uh, so, um, I can see an extension if there are some other similar activities that, that's really part of, uh, an overall planning, uh, for the affordable housing, uh, requirements that we have uh, by state statute, so I, I can justify that.
Okay, so it sounds like, other than the, um, recording secretary that we have, we'll probably just leave things status quo and work with what we have.
Yeah, we've accomplished, we've, we've accomplished what we needed to, which was to get the, get them on the radar that there will be more coming, so.
Okay, I just didn't want to leave them out of the discussion.
Got it.
That's all I have.
All right, so, the, the question, question before us is, do we want to keep the twenty-ninth there? Um, or because we would anticipate having on the thirty-first, you know, the numbers. Um, and we can share some of this information that we get, uh, as soon as we get it from the department heads, right? Um, MJ, you know, today's Thursday, so I would assume we'd give that until Tuesday to get that, uh, that detail back to us. Um, we'll share that, and we'll share what we find, all right, so folks can take a look at that. Um, meet on the thirty-first, and then if the thirty-first doesn't satisfy, we are.
Somebody can't meet on the thirty-first.
Matt was both, we're both committed to thirty-first in the morning. That's like nine to two, pretty much.
Yeah, cause that was one of our original dates, but you and Mitch couldn't make it.
Well, Matt couldn't make it either, so it was.
Well, that's why I said you and Mitch.
Saying to meet at the end of the day, huh, on a Friday? Or is that too much pressure for you guys to come, go to a?
You wouldn't get back.
Well, you know what, you know what, if, if we, if we, if we keep the twenty-ninth, right? We'll have the data by the thirty-first. Should, and then we're meeting as a board on the, uh, our regular meeting is on the third. And I know this is a gross imposition for most of you in terms of adding another meeting on top of it, since I'll be here. Hopefully I'll remember to bring my coffee cup in that day. Or, or we do the twenty-ninth and the thirty-first, I guess, right? No, the thirty-first is the one that we have a problem with.
I mean.
Expecting a long meeting on the third, just staying, after that meeting, just stay here?
MJ, MJ, when are we presenting? Is it the fifteenth? You're muted again?
It's, um, thirteenth.
Okay, I, yeah, I was, I was just, I was just trying to get my, uh, schedule up.
It, the B O F meeting is Thursday, February thirteenth, as far as I think.
Right.
If I got that right.
Yeah, so, um.
I have that.
So at your, at your meeting on February third, you have to approve budgets, bonding, and capital. That has to be done on the third in order for us to meet our newspaper requirements.
Uh, we could have a special meeting afterwards, right?
Of course, I'm just saying the third, you can't go past the third, we have to have a final decision on the third.
What, why, uh, why in the third? To get resolutions?
To get the publication in the paper in time for the Board of Finance meeting.
Really?
Yeah, that's just the presentation.
That's a presentation, I don't even know that that needs to be posted. Trey?
Yeah, it's usually published twice. I don't do the finance handles that, but I know for a fact that it's published before the Board of Finance meeting and before the public hearing. I believe.
Uh, is that, is that a requirement?
I don't, well, I don't know, I don't know if, if it has to be published, but I think Dar has to get the, um, get it to the paper by then. Like, I don't know when it comes out, but I know there's, there's different time limits for Board of Finance, cause it's so big.
By, by, I think, I think by us.
Good.
By us, by us, uh, posting it in the paper, did they provide us with the copies that we can distribute at? The, that's at the town meeting, not at the Board of Finance meeting, though.
Right, no, it's at the town meeting. It's at the Board of Finance public hearing, and then it's published again for the town meeting. Because Board of, if Board of Finance may make adjustments, but I don't know when they have to get it to the paper. You'd have to ask Darlene that, cause she publishes the budget.
Yeah, but I, I, I thought the first requirement by charter is, or by state statute is for the, uh,
March public meeting.
Right, I, right, I don't think it has to be published before the Board of Finance meeting where you present it, but I think they need extra time to put it together for the public hearing. But I, again, check with Darlene on that, I don't know when she needs to have it in by.
All right, I'm just going by what we have on the schedules, but I, we, we can double check that.
Should we just ask Darlene to come in for a minute and get the answer?
Well, well, we, we'll want to double check charter and, and stuff, so just to be sure. I, I'm just saying that's on our schedule, so.
Yeah, but after as long as folks can. I can do the third, okay. What happens on the thirteenth? What's the meeting on the thirteenth? It's a presentation.
That's, that's what Matt and the Board of Ed presented to the U S.
Yeah, so we're keeping the twenty-ninth, yeah?
Yes.
Not gonna be able to.
Oh, we are keeping the twenty-ninth?
Eight AM, you say, keep saying eight AM.
That's the one that's at eight AM.
You got it, I've got that, and we're on for the thirty-first, right? But that means we can continue to go to Karma, which means I gotta tell them I'm coming.
All right, so I'm, I'm just looking at the schedule closely as to what we have. I think in the past, because we have had all these meetings before your regular boarded, board meeting, that that has just worked for us to have those things on your regular board meeting, for us to get it published in the paper, um, right after the requests are given to the Board of Finance. So, we could probably go out from there. I, I think it's, like I said, the timing has just worked in the past. Not that it has to be in the paper before the Board of Selectmen, before the Board of Finance meter, meaning, it's just, you guys have already always met that and not had to have any more meetings after that.
Right, so, but isn't there an expensive curve by putting it in the paper before the Board of Finance meeting?
It's, it's to go in before the public hearing.
Oh, okay, good, all right, so.
I just spoke to Dar, I just spoke to Darlene, she said, yeah, there's no problem with the publication. She, it's gonna be in on the twenty-sixth, and she needs to get it to them by the nineteenth. So, it doesn't have to do with the publication, the February third timeline.
Right.
So we have some time.
Yeah, like I said.
There are some variables that we should consider, and I want to have a, a fully fledged discussion about, uh, our, our, our full strategy on this, relative to, um, you know, what we're willing to do now, and what we anticipate we might have to do.
And, and what ha, what the obligation to get published is our proposed budget, the actual budget.
Uh, no, the overall budget that's going to the public hearing, the budget.
To go to the public hearing.
It's ours and the Board of Education's. So.
So, um, we, we could in effect state, we're, I mean, it's fine. I think we all said it's fine, we can stay longer on the third, but technically, we could even meet one more time about what we needed to.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
I agree.
I mean, it depends on how long it takes you to get your presentation together.
Right, I, I, again, it's just because we've been changing these meetings after the budget schedule was put in place, so.
All right, so, let's do, um, let, let's do the third, uh, immediately following, uh, our meeting. If we wanted to do executive, let's do, uh, do an executive session at the board meeting, yes, let's do it at the end of the board meeting, all right? Uh, so Trey, it'll be executive session, uh, to discuss, uh, 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 salary negotiations. On the third, right?
Are you still meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Okay.
Boy, we are confusing.
I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure if you want the executive session on the twenty-ninth or on the regular meeting, but if you want regular meeting.
Let's do that.
Let's do the twenty.
Okay. Yeah, I thought we decided to do that on the twenty-ninth.
All right.
It would be nice if, if we could do as much on the twenty-ninth as possible, then it, then we don't have to put ourselves further into more meetings, but we'll see.
You got it.
Yeah.
That gives me time to talk to all the departments.
Have the executive on the twenty-ninth, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going, yes, we're going to, yes.
It'll be, that'll be the occasion of my son's thirty-first birthday. How does that happen? All right, uh, MJ, thank you for, and Mitch, thank you for all your work on this, pull this together. Um, anybody else has any other thoughts or ideas as to additional things that they need, don't hesitate to reach out, um, Mitch and Mary Jane, they're at your beck and call.
Yeah, I'm sure they appreciate that.
I had, I had your answer. Uh, what, what, separating the, but that, Mary Jane and I, we've already cut out a lot of it, so it was superfluous, I think, information.
About what? About what?
Sue had asked a question, I thought it went to everybody, maybe it didn't, um, the, the, what the news, to break out the new salaries and how much of the salary increase is based on new salaries. But once Matt had already
Yeah.
made suggestions to you, I was like, okay, well, doesn't matter anymore.
Do you think we can just hand for, um, uh, a, a, a printout of the, um, a, a financial report regarding the program account?
Yes, MJ's got it.
You got, you have it already, cause we haven't looked at it for a long time, so, um, I just, for F W X, we, we should just keep. I, I was under the impression things were whittling down, but maybe, maybe we take.
We, we've been generating three or four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
In, in, in excess revenues over costs, right? Now, Pam, Pam, Pam was like a drunken sailor, spending, spending freely, uh, who had said, spend the money, she did. And they're, and they're all appropriate.
Yes, yes.
So.
Are we being recorded?
Yes, I think we're done now, all right? So, uh, and you're gonna follow with Pam on the other issue.
Yes.
What is effectively not getting done.
Still recording, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute. Second.
Now, let me try mine, it's all in favor. That motion carries.